It's six o'clock. I'll call the November the ninth, 2021, meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. Tonight, we have Pastor Mike Ingo from the Draper Valley Pentecostal Holiness Church to provide an invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you, guys, for the opportunity, and I certainly appreciate you continuing this practice. Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father and almighty God, as we come to you tonight on behalf of these who have gathered for this county board and the citizens who have come forth here tonight, Lord, we thank you for all that this board does and ask your blessings upon them and their families. And now, tonight, Lord, I just pray that the decisions that have to be made here, that, Lord, you would just guide and direct and help them as they do that to look out for the citizens of the county. And we'll give you the thanks as we invoke your presence here this evening. And most of all, thank you, Jesus, for what you did for us on the cross. It's in your name we ask it. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I mean, you've got something here.
Yeah, I was going to the presentation. The first item on our agenda tonight is a presentation, retirement presentation. Sheriff Keith Dunn, Sheriff, if you'd come on. And I'll invite you, Lieutenant, Assistant Sheriff, Tammy Dunn. With County Resolution 2021-34, Resolution Honored Chair Keith Dunn. Whereas Keith Dunn began his career with Kenny Sheriff's Office in 1983. First as a jailer, then patrol sergeant, then worked his way up to narcotics staff and where he received the top of coffee. Then became lieutenant investigation. In 2005, Mr. Dunn was promoted to chief deputy, then was elected as With County Sheriff in January 2015. And whereas Mr. Dunnigan created Sheriff's Office Diversion, there's other waters like Indian and our recovery bodies. And whereas Mr. Dunnigan was instrumental in expanding the school resource program so that every school in With County has an SRO. More recently, he assisted in placing police media in front of all the schools in order to deter criminal activity. And whereas Mr. Dunnigan has written several million dollars in grants to fund positions for additional officers, primarily for drug enforcement and SROs. And whereas Mr. Dunnigan has been involved with Virginia Police and Helldress Association, Police Association of Virginia, both the Virginia Sheriff's Association as well as the foundation, Virginia Chiefs of Police, New River Valley Regional Jail and Valorant Board, Mount Robert Asap Board of Director, and is past president of the New River Valley Chapter of the Virginia PBA, past president of the Mountain Empire Chapter of the Virginia PBA, and past state vice president, president of the Virginia PBA. In addition, Mr. Dunnigan was a former adjunct faculty at Withfield Community College and a member of the WCC Law Enforcement and Valorant Committee. Now, therefore, may it resolve that the With County Board of Supervisors assemble in regular session this Sunday, November 2021, thus hereby express its appreciation on behalf of the citizens of With County to this distinguished gentleman for a job well done and thus convey its best wishes to him and his family for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. And may it further resolve that the With County Board of Supervisors thus hereby direct this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of this board that a framed copy be given to With Dunnigan as a testament of their heart and power. A document on Sunday, November 2021, signed by Lieutenant, Chair. I want to take a motion to approve of 2021-34. Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Moore. All of the papers received by the same guy.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I will say, I guess, this circle thing, as all of the Resolution 2021-34, I think that my first plan was to share it also in 34. Years ago, I met Sheriff Dunnigan, he was my teacher at the WCC. Later on, I ended up working with him, working for him. And I appreciate everything you've done for me. I would have, I guess, five and a half years of this. I remember, I went in there and I said, you know, I'd like to run the town council very true. Hey, you know, that's your life. Go forward and love the county. And I've done that for a while. Then I went in there and said, hey, I'd like to run for board supervisor. And I cleaned up the Zach Banffer, but it's something that I think is crazy. But I do appreciate everything you've done.
I'm sorry. Oh. And we had a discussion earlier. I'm not sure why I didn't like this much when it tired of this. And also, we got a flag presented to Mr. Keith Dunnigan in appreciation of her being here to serve as 1983 to 2021 With County Sheriff's Office. If you'll pose. I want to say a few words, turn around, pose.
I've had opportunities to, all my careers, to have good people to do this with. That's what really makes us, this year. And we've got a really good board now, people down there. Went out and wanted to get this board and things in the market. They're nice, I hope. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good seeing you.
Good morning.
Congratulations.
Moving on with the agenda tonight, we have a public hearing. I'm sorry, Mr. McRoberts.
I have something, I like to say, in the R. I see Mr. Bronis back there, and I wish he'd come up a minute. I want to. I want to have you shoot off there. He'd be taking my place on this floor. And he'll define it. Because he was counting just like that. And we need. So it's Mr. Jesse Barney, lead man.
We have a public hearing tonight for the enterprise zone boundary amendment. The With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing to consider amending the With County enterprise zone boundaries. Public comment regarding the proposed amendment will be heard at this hearing. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November the ninth, 2021, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the County Administration Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. We did not have anybody signed up to speak on the boundary amendment. Is there anybody that got here late that would like to speak on the boundary amendment? Here and now, I'll close the public hearing portion of the boundary amendment. We have Mr. Matthews. Do you want to say anything?
Hope everyone's having a good evening. I appreciate you having me. You guys should have it in your board packet, the maps for the boundary amendment, as well as a summary of the properties that we'll be adding and deletions from the enterprise zone. So the social house, the entire DMV, shopping plaza, Dutch pantry, and Grub, Retreat, Grab and Go are all being added into the enterprise zone. They'll be eligible for state incentives, including the Real Property Improvement Grant, as well as the Job Creation Grant, and any local incentives that any of our governing bodies choose to add to the incentive packages, either that currently exist or if you guys want to make any changes, we can certainly do that at another time. But we'll be pulling out Grub Funeral Home, Huff Ford, and Forest Street McDonald's. They've all exhausted their grant eligibility through their projects. They've all received letters letting them know that the public hearing is taking place and they will be removed from the enterprise zone. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Matthews? Mr. Baird, do you have anything to add?
No, I appreciate following the recommendation from the board. He did go out and meet with the Town and Grub Retreat and with a couple of places there on the Grub Retreat area. So I have nothing else to add, Mr. Matthews.
Do we need to take action tonight, or?
I believe Mr. Matthews will prepare a resolution for us to take action on at our next meeting.
Is the, under possible deletions down there, you've got proposed deletions, it's 3.7 acres?
That's correct.
Is that a typo? Because you've got one acre for Grub, one, two and point seven for Hubs, and one for McDonald's.
That's correct. That's a typo. I'll get that adjusted for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Citizens Time. We have one person signed up, Mr. Charles Herring.
Thank y'all for having me. I appreciate it. I sent an email a while back to state in the future of the Apex Center. I'm not sure what y'all's resolution is going forward for the new year. But this is just my suggestions and observations from, you know, the citizens of With County, you know, to address you guys. Going forward, it needs to have, you know, new board members or even make some changes and have a better management team. There needs to be changes to the facility and the ground. Get rid of the dirt floor inside of the center and put concrete in. That way, I did read some past things that y'all had mentioned about, I think, a gun show or something. You know, having dirt floor, that wouldn't be feasible for something like that. Build a dirt strip for events like monster trucks, tractor pulls, and other outdoor events. If you have an indoor event that requires bringing the dirt, you know, build something on the outside to store the dirt in and bring it in when you need it. Of course, build more parking, build another way into the site to eliminate congestion at its current entrance. Sell off some of the properties for hotels, restaurants, future business, even apartments. You know, look around other counties and that, get ideas from them. You know, because there's other options for that 90 acres that you guys got sitting there. My closing is, there are so many opportunities for this area to grow and prosper for many years. This place could have many events and draw in enough revenue for With County plus pay off the debt that this place accumulated. It will take some time, but it's possible. Putting the right people in the right place will make a huge difference. We want With County to prosper and keep the younger citizens around here. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Herring.
Thank you.
If you might got any questions or?
Thank you, sir. We'll close Citizens Time, move on to the payment of invoices. Each board member receives a pack of invoices in their agenda. Entertain a motion to pay the invoices presented. I have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any invoice any member wants to pull out and/or discuss? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes from our previous meeting, October the 26th. Entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion by Mr. McRoberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any corrections to the minutes as presented? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is old business. Mr. Baird, do we have anything for old business?
I do not have anything for old business tonight.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything for old business? Moving on to new business, the first item is our VDOT update. We have Mr. Fowler, Ms. Heath. Ms. Heath, I believe you want to go first. Because we throw rocks at Mr. Fowler.
Thank you. I just have a few things that Stephen and I have been working on. Salem Stone, their entrance there, they're working to pave it in the spring to kind of avoid any of these, the sand piling up in the road, the issues that we're having now. So that's their plan. They're working towards that. They've rerouted the way the trucks leave in the last six or eight months, and that's why more sand is accumulating at the entrance. So that's their plan, is to pave in the spring and avoid that. The Route 619 retention ponds that we have, they were cleaned out on July 9th by a hired contractor, and they'll be cleaned out once a year, depending on what accumulates there. Connors Valley Road, the drainage improvements, we're moving forward with that. We're looking at installing a box culvert and raising the road just a short, like a few inches, and try to alleviate the drainage in the road that we're having there now. Reed Creek, the pipe, well, the pipe that the property owner has to, that carries or allows his cattle to cross under the road to get to the water, we will be replacing that pipe. And East Lee Highway, we have a pipe, it's the frontage road there. We have a pipe that is starting to fail, and we have a plan to replace it. It's going to be an emergency contract, and we'll have that replaced hopefully in the spring. And that's all I have. If anybody's got any questions?
Does anybody have anything for Ms. Heath?
No, I just want to thank you for the updates on Lots Gap and Connors Valley, and also the patchwork that you, y'all completed down on Reed Creek Drive, down along the creek. That looked good. I actually seen it this weekend.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
How's it going this evening?
Hello.
Good, sir.
Mr. Baird contacted me the other day and asked that I give a brief rundown of the secondary six-year plan projects, projects that we completed this year, 2021, and upcoming projects. And did everyone get a copy of the updates? Okay. Okay, so I'm going to start with the routes completed in 2021. We completed seven routes in 2021, totaling seven miles of roadway that were converted from gravel roads to solid surface roads. First one being Route 619, Major Graham. We completed the final phase of Major Graham, Major Graham Road in Withfield area. Most of the work had been completed in 2020, and in this, early this year, in the spring of 2021, we completed the Shoulderstone installation. Next route, Route 642, Pope Road, 2.5-mile project in Withfield area headquarters area. We completed that route in August of 2021. And Mr. Roy Cox is a, is a very happy man. He's called me several times to thank me. And actually, he's invited me over for a cookout, so. He's very happy about that completion of that route. So, and we're happy to have completed it for, for, well, for Roy, but also for the citizens that travel that route. The third route completed in 2021 was Back Road in the Speedwell area, Route 602. It was a 1.1-mile section, completed that in July of 2021. Next route, Glade Road, Route 664, 0.43-mile section in the Speedwell area was completed in October of 2021. Goyan Fork Road, Route 686, 0.2-mile little short section, was completed in May of 2021. And Hogback Road, 1.3-mile, that was a good project there to complete. It was a nice connector route from Route 21 over to the Black Lick area. It was completed in October of 2021. And Kings Chapel, 0.2-mile section in Withfield area, was completed in September of 2021. Guys did a good job. You know, our area headquarters, just like Keith had mentioned about the deputies being the actual soul of the Sheriff's Department, the same for VDOT. Our guys out at the area headquarters, they do a phenomenal job. You know, to be the low number of staff that we have to be able to accomplish seven miles of roads that they built in With County on top of all the maintenance work that they keep up with. And I commend our area headquarters folks for the work that they do. Upcoming, and, or actually, roads that have just begun construction in 2021. Jonas Town Road, Route 738, is ready for construction. They're mobilizing, and they'll be starting the pipe installation and drainage work. Miller's Creek Road, the next 0.5-mile section in the Withfield area will be started soon as well. They're mobilizing and starting that project. Walters Road, Route 662, also, they're mobilizing to start that project in the Speedwell area. Next year upcoming in 2021, I mean, I'm sorry, 2022, in the spring, they'll start Walton Furnace Road in the Withfield area. They'll start another section of Walton Furnace Road, also in the Withfield area. Pine View Drive in the Speedwell area. Raccoon Run in the Withfield area. Earl's Road in the Speedwell area, and Shadow Lane in the Withfield area. And so, that's, that's all I have for the six-year plan, unless anyone has any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Fowler? I will, I'll echo what you said about your staff and what they've already accomplished. Because I know they were back on the molder detail after they were kind of silent when I was about to state during COVID, so they've had their hands full this year. Certainly appreciate everything they do.
And I guess at this time, oh, go ahead, Stephen. I want to say, I want to express appreciation for the work that you've done in Progress Park, especially in preparations for our company looking at our sites and ultimately choosing our sites. So thank you for your assistance.
Thank you for everything.
I don't know what you can say about the road that you cut off there, but I can have a question. If you could do anything then to this property. Is there any property on this body work?
Thank you. The drainage engineer came out and looked at that, and he's working up a recommendation on how to, how to deal with that water.
Okay, thank you.
We're waiting on that.
So I guess at this time, we can just, I'll take any requests or issues that you guys have.
I will say that hopefully one of these, we can get the trustees back on the trash detail. I know y'all, we've had a skeleton crew out, and y'all jumped right on, got the bags picked up. Hopefully, we can get that program going.
Yes, we're working toward getting that set back up. And we actually were able to get some crews to work on Progress Park when Stephen requested that we get it cleaned up for the groundbreaking ceremony. We're actually able to get some inmates to come and help us get that knocked out, so. But we are working toward getting back to normal, hopefully, on that soon.
Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Fowler?
Just, I just want to keep dough running up in our vision. I know we get a lot of complaints about water runoff on that road. Just want to make sure that we're, we're looking. I know it's on the six-year plan, be paved here the next couple of years, but there's some water issues down next to Miss Nester's at the end.
And I know Pine and Glade, it's not perfect, but better than it was.
Yes. Yeah, they started doing some patching on that, and then we're working toward an overlay at some point, so.
21 is all pieces right now.
21. I'm not, which section?
The section where they're grinding it up and repaving, repaving it.
Oh, okay. Well, then, then we're on our way to getting that fixed, so.
I have a question on, well, first of all, y'all, y'all did an excellent job on Back Road. But on Jonas Town Road, I have asked this question, and I'm not positive if the answer's there or not. Are you going all the way up and go around the tree, or are you just going to the end of the state maintenance? It says the dead end, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, so it, from St. Peter's Road to the dead end, so that will get us to the end of state maintenance.
So the loop, the loop that you go on up and make around the tree will not be paved, or hard surface?
I'll have to check into that, but if it's beyond state maintenance, no.
I know it's beyond state maintenance, but it's, it is a school bus turnaround.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I don't know if they can make a school bus turnaround anywhere else of that road.
Yeah, I'll have to check into that before, I can't commit to anything off state maintenance, but we'll look at what we have there and see if something makes sense.
Okay.
See what we can do.
The other thing that I had is I had somebody call me about the connector road that we're going to put into Progress Park. They're saying that there's a 100-foot section, Stephen probably knows more about it than I do. They moved it to the north, if that'd be right. There's a 100-foot section of a man's farm that's going to be on one side of the road, and the rest of it's going to be on the other. I mean, is he going to be, is that land going to become VDOT's land, and he'll be compensated for it, or?
That came up, and I, the designer in Bristol spoke with him. And I don't know the outcome of that conversation. I know that they were going to have, they were going to talk on the phone about that situation. And I don't know what the result was. We'll find out then.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And that virtual public hearing is?
Can I tell you? I can't remember. I've got it in my calendar, but.
I'll make sure, share that, and let me make sure you share that with that individual as well. But I know that their right-of-way people are working directly with the owners on whether they're obtaining all that property or whether they're. I know that one owner had requested cattle crossings underneath in order because he still wanted to run cattle on that part of property. And I know another landowner has contacted us wanting to have the road moved so it's adjoining his property because he wants an entrance on his property, and it's moved further north than was anticipated. That's because of some of what they've come across in their findings through there, but.
I think that, well, I have. Now, if you keep paving all my gravel roads, I'm not going to have any rocks to throw at you.
All right. That's the, that's the only reason I'm paving these roads.
Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Fowler? Well, thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Heath.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the general special election, Mr. Count.
Hey, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to come and give y'all an update on the past election that we had. Had a little, we had about 3,000 more vote last Tuesday than voted in the past gubernatorial election. It's about 54% of our registered voters voted in the election. So the total turnout was 11,600. Our absentee numbers were still high this year. Between the by mail and the in-person, we saw. Between the by mail and the in-person, we saw, uh, 2,851 people vote prior to election day. So that's about 25% of our total turnout. So like I said, those numbers are still, still holding strong for us on that and keeping us busy during that 45-day period. Ben and Ricky who work for Mr. Bowers both assisted us, uh, with helping take items out before, on the Monday before the election and picking everything up on Wednesday. We really appreciate that. It's nice having two, especially on that Wednesday, because we can get back a lot faster and, and get to canvassing over everything. Uh, we utilized 44 officers of election this past go-around. We are a little bit down from last year, but, uh, it was a little bit slower, so, in some precincts. I know Mr. Matthews was still probably pretty busy over there in, in East Withfield. But, uh, I do want to mention Roar Treat was the top vote getter again this year. Last November, they, we saw the most folks vote down there and there were 1,300 folks that voted again for this election. Uh, I do want to mention that we appreciate using the early voting space that we had this year. Access this year, I believe folks are more, folks got used to using our curbside voting signs. So we, we had a lot of curbside voters, which is good. So like I said, we had a lot of folks, if they couldn't make it into the building, they were coming to us. Or they were calling us and we could bring the ballot out to them. So that really helped out. It was a lot better this year than it was last year. I think I received a couple of complaints of the lack of handrails up the Spring Street side of the, from the sidewalk up to the bill, up to the first level of sidewalk there. But, um, like I said, that's what, what I have for the early voting part anyways. Any questions from y'all?
Thank you.
Thank y'all. We'll be working to purchase new poll books. Now that's our, our next step and big training opportunity for everybody, for all of our officers. So that'll be what our, hopefully we'll get those in. I don't know how long it takes to get 30 iPads. Who knows in this, these times, it'd probably take us until next November, so we'll have to wait and see, but.
Well, we're talking, we want to talk about buying lead mines of boats. You might take it to California.
Just clump, see if I can't go find them up there. That may not be a bad idea.
You can make a good pirate.
Yeah. Only, I'll bring Mr. Katrin with me. That's the only way I can do it, so. All right, well, if y'all need anything, you know where to find me, so, thanks.
Thanks, Lynn.
Mr. Chairman, historically, the board has just made a motion to acknowledge acceptance of the votes from the general registrar.
Great data, Paul. Entertain a motion to accept the abstracted votes as presented. So have a motion by Mr. Smith, I have a second. Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion? Here's none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is banking changes. Miss Gwen, come up here and give us some bad news.
Well, we'll say I would always aggravate Mr. Counts and tell him as soon as we could get our tax bills out, I would get more voters in for him. Because a lot of people were, would come in and they would say, can I vote over there? And we're like, yeah, so they would go vote. So we tried to, tried to help him in that department. Well, as the saying goes, things change and banking is changing. We were notified, well, let me back up. For the county, we bank with the National Bank of Blacksburg. And, um, we have always had what I'm going to label a lucrative deal with them on credit card processing. And the bank has always, um, for years, probably 15 years, I would guess, absorbed our credit card fees, which includes the treasurer's office, the water department, the building department, and Parks and Rec. Well, we were notified in early October that as of January 1st of 2022, National Bank of Blacksburg will no longer be absorbing credit card fees on our behalf. This also affects as far as other localities in our region, the town of Withfield, which I'm sure you all have seen the firestorm on Facebook that they've had over the past week with this. Town of Withfield's affected Pulaski County, Giles County, and, uh, the town of Perrisburg are the localities that, um, that use National Bank. So this has affected all of us. It's not just us, it's not just town of Withfield, it's affected everybody. National Bank had partnered with Thrive Payments to provide this service. Thrive was notified at the same time that we were. They received the exact same letter that all of us localities did stating that as of January 1st, there would be this change. So now, um, a question for you all, and I'll give you more information, but I want to throw this at you to start with. We as in the county, you man and lady, have to decide, does the county want to absorb these credit card fees? Or do we want to start charging a convenience fee that passes on to the customer to use their credit card within any of our departments? If we absorb, that's going to require, um, it falls into our procurement, it's going to require RFPs. If we, um, pass the fee on, uh, we do not have to meet those procurement requirements and do any RFPs. We would actually be able to, um, stay with Thrive. They've, uh, they're extending their same rates to us that they had always charged to National Bank that, as I said, the bank absorbed for us. So with all that being said, here are some numbers for you to think about. For calendar year 2020, between the four departments, we all collectively processed a total of 19,430 transactions. That equated out to total revenue collected of $4,769,521. The total expenses that the bank, um, incurred on our behalf was $91,452. Um, as we know with the pandemic with 2020, um, of course, folks lost their jobs, folks didn't have the income that they had. So they, they, um, you know, weren't always able to pay the, the tax bill or, um, maybe weren't doing maybe as much building, maybe a little bit of remodeling, but not, you know, major projects. With the, um, stay on, uh, utility disconnections, you know, the water department, um, you didn't have that, that force of, you know, being able to collect water sewer revenue because they couldn't do disconnections. So our 2020 numbers probably aren't, um, quite where they would normally be because of that. But moving into 2021, um, from January to August, so this does not take in, of course, right now, after tax bills have gone out. For January through August of 2021 thus far, for that period of time, the county for the four departments had, um, processed 13,000 transactions that totaled $2,362,000. That total expense incurred to that point by our bank was $44,740. So in essence, we're probably looking at a hundred thousand dollars in fees that either, um, we have to absorb, find a way to do that, or we have to pass on to the consumer. Based on these numbers and some numbers I actually just got in yesterday because Thrive, um, they got blindsided just like we did. So because National Bank was their customer, they had to go about it differently to be able to pull this information. I've just gotten access to some other things that I need to take a look at. Additional factors that come into play with these total expenses is a difference of, um, a card being present, which is you walking into one of the offices and you paying with your card there, and that's called a chip read, versus a phone payment, which, um, a lot of my office, our transactions are phone payments. So is water department, Parks and Rec. They have a lot of phone payments because of folks reserving, um, campsites. Building, I think, has some phone payments, I'm not sure to what extent. But a phone payment has more liability with it and there's a higher charge to process cards through a phone payment. So like right now, if you call into the treasurer's office and say, I want to pay my taxes, the bank is incurring a higher fee to process that card for you than they are when Ms. Lawson walks in and she gives us her card to pay her taxes in person. Her fee's going to be a lower fee than what the phone card not present fee is. So another factor is, do we still accept phone payments? So I've talked to Stephen a little bit here and there, we've, we've kind of talked, but it was one of those things I needed to bring to you all. And at, we just kind of need to eventually work through a few things. A lot of our collections is over the phone, um, not just my office, but the water, you know, the utility department when it's, um, the payment deadline, when it's, um, cutoff time, um, you know, the other two departments, you know, they, they have phone payments as well, but we're the two that has the most. So, um, in moving forward, if, if we decide to implement a convenience fee, we will have to either establish a flat fee per transaction or it has to be a set percentage. Based on our transaction numbers, um, rock bottom fee that, in my opinion, on, on my calculations, that we'll be able to charge is 3%. That, that's the absolute bottom. Visa and MasterCard will not allow you to charge no more than a 4% fee, so we can't go over four. But in keeping it close to what cost estimates appear to be, we're looking at probably a 3% surcharge.
Have you looked at any other banks, see if any other bank is willing to absorb the charge?
We have been the cream of the crop with the National Bank. All other banks, um, are always, you know, I see them out at conferences or just, you know, other places, even other localities. And they'll say, well, what, what rate do y'all charge for credit cards? And those five of us have always been able to say, we don't charge anything, our bank absorbs our fees. And their jaw just hits the ground. Other local banks here, um, you know, they've, they've asked, you know, hey, what, what can we do? And I'm like, do you, can you offer credit cards at no charge? And they're like, no, absolutely not, because we have to pay for that and we're not absorbing that. So, um, we can look at a, an entirely different provider. You know, at some point, I think because of this short notification on it, um, I think probably for right now, maybe stay with Thrive for a little while and then we can kind of test the waters to see what else is out there. There's other programs out there that are compatible with Tyler Munus, which, um, all this kind of hit at an odd time because I was working on trying to find a credit card processor for utility billing for when they go live for the citizen self-serve program through Munus. And, um, I'm like, so I'm trying to find that, then this occurs and then I'm trying to look to see if I can find something to cover both. The only thing is, is not every department is on Munus. For example, my own, real estate, personal property tax is all we have on there. We accept credit cards for lodging tax, meals tax, state income taxes, dog tags, uh, land use payments. Ms. Ball just finished with that revalidation. We accept credit card payments for all of that. All of that, those pieces for my office especially, they're not on Munus. That's still an entirely separate transaction in real estate and, uh, personal property payments. So we have to still have something that's a standalone that is not connected to the software program. Building department is not on Munus. Parks and Rec is not on Munus. Utility buildings working toward that. So we still have to have a, a provider that is not going to be, um, I'm saying probably the online provider, but in addition to being an in-office provider. So what I'm, well, let me go on to something else. I've had to make notes here because I knew I would ramble and forget a few things. As far as the credit cards, Visa and MasterCard charge the lower percentage rates. So what ends up, what happens is when you use your card, um, there's a percentage charge. And then, uh, Thrive has a, um, 35 cent, uh, charge per transaction. And, well, actually ends up being a 45 cent charge per transaction. They break it down to a 35 cent and a 10 cent. Discover, um, has about the same rate as Visa and MasterCard. American Express is a lot higher. So if you have someone wanting to use Amex, then, um, in charging a fee, depending on what that fee is, we're probably not really going to come close to being at a, a level point. Um, there is the possibility that of even setting a set fee or charging a set percentage, that at the end of the month, um, we may have to absorb some of that expense. I don't think it would be a large amount. I don't know how folks are going to, um, receive this change because they're used to calling and making payments without having to pay extra. You know, at the end of the month, our, our charges, and I'll just use low numbers, but it may be 5,000. But in fees or the surcharge or percentage, we may have only collected 4,500 or 4,900. So we have to be prepared for that, too. Taking all this out of the equation, credit card machines that we all currently have will no longer be supported as of December 31st, which aggravates me because I just bought a new one last year for my office that I spent money on and now they're telling me it's not any good. We're looking at a minimum right now of $575 per machine. We have nine machines between all of our departments. So that's money that none of us budgeted for this, this fiscal year. So all of you all have the look that I have had for the past month of like, oh my gosh.
I have.
So.
You got any good news?
Yes, we've collected almost 2 million in taxes since the bills went out. I looked today.
I have a few things. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
First, you said debit and credit card transactions, right?
Well, here's the thing, um, debit cards, you cannot charge a fee for, which means we would have to absorb. Um, it's probably, um, I, I talked to my contact at Thrive again today and, and unfortunately she had a family emergency, so we weren't able to talk very long, but it is probably going to come down to only credit cards. And we, you know, of course, most everybody's debit card through their bank is a credit card as well. Where it's going to affect it is going to be those that are the prepaid debits, uh, that are strictly just a debit card. But right now it's looking like we're probably going to have to go to strictly credit cards.
Now, is this, and you say you can't charge a fee for debit card, but are we getting charged a fee for debit card?
Yeah.
I, I.
And the machines can be, uh, let me throw this in real quickly, Stephen. The machines can be programmed, um, because I didn't note on, or touch on that. The machines can be programmed to accept credit cards only. So if you come in and you hand us your debit card or, or whatever, it will automatically run it as a credit, which is the cheaper rate. It's, um, well, not exactly the cheaper rate, a debit is the cheaper rate, but we have to decide if, if we're going to accept debit, do we absorb? But there's no, you can have this and this, it either has to be this way or this way. The machines also, uh, can be programmed to charge the flat fee or the percentage, whichever we choose. The only thing is going to be, um, which is a good thing, we don't touch that fee. So if you come in and let's say the fee's set at 3% and you pay a hundred dollars on a bill, your fee's $3. We only see the hundred dollar transaction, but on the taxpayer or the, the water customer statement, they're going to see a hundred dollars to With County and $3 to Thrive Payments. We still get our money next day like we always have with Thrive, which is great because a lot of companies, you're looking at most of the time a three to five business day turnaround of getting your funds. And when you deal with the money that we do at different times of the year for, throughout our departments, I don't want us to have to wait three to five days to get our money, not that amount that we're, we're looking at. So, um, I don't know, it's, it comes down to, and this may be something for y'all to think about. And we could, you know, revisit next meeting or I can come to a budget meeting or if you want to authorize Stephen. I want to talk with, meet with Stephen and Regina and we could kind of go through it since they deal more with the departments that are housed up here in this building. But the end result comes down to, we as the county, are we going to absorb the fees? Or do we want to pass that on to our customers?
And I, I don't expect an answer tonight because we're just hitting you with this, but it's, it's.
And I, I don't expect an answer tonight because we're just hitting you with this, but it's, it, she's been working frantically on this and, and I think we've got to sit down and come up with a proposal for you all to look at those things and what we can do. Because it's, it is an advantage we've had for a long time. We've just got to make certain we put into correct policies and procedures to do so.
I did want to ask though, I've been following, um, yeah, I've been following the tough decision that the tunnel was go had to make to pass that on to the customer or the, um, citizen, I should say. And have they decided on a fee or a percentage yet?
Um, I spoke with Mr. Stevens today. They really haven't. He said they're looking at about a three percent. But our numbers have really, um, are all over the place. And I'll, just to have a year's comparison to, um, give you an idea, for the, um, water department last year, their expense to volume come out to about two point seven percent. The building department and the rec department was over three percent. So you're kind of going to have another department absorbing from that. Our office, based on volume, because we had about three and a half million last year in, uh, total volume, we were at about a one point seven percent. So, um, it's, um, you're kind of going to have, I guess, one sort of carrying the other, but we about, I think for all departments, need to go straight across the board with it. Because I don't think we want it to be what the treasurer's office, you know, only pay a, a two percent fee. But when I go to the water department, I have to pay three percent. But I call to reserve a campground or a camp, uh, uh, campsite at the campground, I'm having to pay three and a half. I think we need, we need to be across the board for all departments in that way. That makes it easier for, um, presenting it to the citizens and it's, it's a set rate. It's not, well, if you go here, it's this and you go here, it's that. But then you also get the, the kickback of, well, I go to Walmart and they don't charge me. I go to Hardee's, they don't charge me. They're getting charged. You're just paying for it within the cost of that sausage biscuit or that, um, Keurig machine or the, the big screen TV that, that you just bought or whatever, you know, they're, they're incurring those fees. They're, it's just not seen like this is. Did you have other questions, Ms. Lawson?
I was, well, I, I'm assuming this will probably be referred to the budget committee. I'm not on the budget committee, but I will say, um, I don't think it would, it would ever work not to do the telephone payments. You know, so many people depend on those.
It wears us out. I know it wears water department out, but it, it is such a convenience to folks because, you know, it's just easy to call on your lunch break or you have the citizen that's, um, unable to, um, to come out or, or whatever and they can, they can call and pay. Again, don't know how much of that will change, um, with these changes because currently for my office, and I have since about, well, since twenty sixteen, for, so for five years now, I accept online payments through a third-party provider. They charge a flat, um, two point seven five percent regardless of the transaction amount. But we have to, of course, manually key in all those transactions. But just for me, last year for our office, we had, um, over four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in taxes collected just through that online provider. And, um, love Ms. Debbie Repass, but when I started this five years ago, she looked at me with all seriousness and she said, Lori, people will not pay that fee. They will not pay that fee. And I said, Ms. Debbie, I said, people will. And I said, it'll surprise you. I said, I won't, but folks will. This is where we're going to find out to what extent now with it being a different ballgame, as the saying goes. So.
Definitely tough, but we'll have to do what we have to do.
It's, um, you know, like I said, banking changes and I guess it's the price of conducting business. But, um, I do want to stress, we're, we're in preliminary on this. So I know, you know, this board meeting is going to hit YouTube and, and, you know, the newspaper is going to watch it as well and, and everything. But decisions are still being made. Nothing is set in stone. So, um, just needed to throw this at all of you so that you would know what's happening.
It was good while it lasted.
It's been a great run.
I, I thought you were going to say all good things must come to an end.
All things change and yeah, I guess, uh, some good things do come to an end. But like I said, we, we aren't the only locality that got hit by this and our, um, our provider, Thrive Payments, they, um, when I've spoken to them, they said, look, we received the same letter that you did at the exact same time. We had no idea this was coming. So, you know, it's.
See, I like to write a check for my taxes, drop it off on Friday evening. That way I get to keep the money.
Keep it till Monday.
I know how to work the system.
Get paid on Friday, write the check or write it on Thursday.
If you go in her office and pay with a credit card, then you get thirty days. That's my theory.
But any preliminary thoughts or any questions of anything? Or if you think of something later, give me a call because believe me, I've been mulling over this. I've been trying to work on the online, um, piece for utility billing to also eventually, um, serve my own office as well online. It's driving me crazy.
Well, I mean, I don't think anybody likes fees, but it's a convenience fee and that's what it is. It's convenient. I mean, that's just, um, you know, I, I, I got a little frustrated with the amount of money that we've got in the bank. They might waive the fee, but when you look at, you know, close to a hundred thousand dollars, they probably wouldn't be in the bank fees if they're going.
And, you know, the bank has been really great to us over the years because they don't, they don't charge us fees. We make a lot of bond payments, things like that through wire transfer. They don't charge us for that. We don't, um, pay to reorder checks, to reorder deposit tickets. Um, we, we pay no fees technically for anything. I mean, nothing. They, they waive everything. Return checks, they don't charge us for those and a lot of banks will, um, you know, charge us or, you know, you as the, the person thirty-five, fifty dollars. They don't charge us any of that. So we, we've had a good ride. You know, we'll continue to with the exception of thi- this piece of it, um, at this point in time. But they, they've been very good to us, so we can't say that they haven't.
What's the courthouse, courthouse? What's, what's, what's the court's charge? Is it three and a half percent?
That I do not know. Because I think that's through, is it Avalon, which is the state contract?
Mr. Calz, Mr. Calz has raised his hand. I'm not going to inquire as how he knows.
He's the, the backup court clerk.
I was not implying.
But, um, moving forward, um, you know, like I said, I'll, I'll meet with Mr. Bayer and, and, um, Ms. Williams and we'll kind of look at the other departments that are housed up here. And try to come up with something and just, um, we'll see what happens.
All the other counties and all of you threaten to pull your money out, they might change their minds.
They might. I don't know. We'll, we'll see, but.
I think it's a victim of interest rates. I mean, the, the banks can't make any, you know, a lot of money anywhere else. It's just, they, they could absorb it when they were holding a lot of cash out of all of these towns and counties and everything else. You know, we'll, we'll come up with the best option to go forward.
And as we all do, you know, whatever your, your job is, whatever your trade is, you talk to other people within that and see what's going on. So all of us counties and cities and towns, we're always talking. And, um, uh, like I said, Pulaski County was partnered in this with, um, National Bank as well. Smith County, um, they, the county absorbs their fees, um, for utilities and for tax. But the caveat is on the tax side, um, you can only pay real estate and personal property tax. You can't pay meals, lodging, state income, anything else with a card. It has to be strictly real estate and personal property.
Which county is that?
Smith.
Well, we raise our real estate rates to what theirs are.
We could do that.
We'll cover the fees.
Okay. You're about to get yourself in hot water talking about raising tax rates when we've got a reassessment year coming.
I'm just saying, if our tax rate was what theirs was, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
But, um, Washington County, they use a, um, uh, a third-party provider, so it's an automatic, um, set charge. They, um, their DMV is different, uh, because they're a DMV select office. So, uh, of course through DMV, they have to use a certain provider versus who they would use in office for tax purposes. But, um, you know, everybody pretty much uses a, what I'll say, a third-party provider and, and charges a fee. Very few localities absorb, very few. Some did during the pandemic because they could use, um, COVID money, as we've labeled it, to pay those fees. But, so, I'll end my rambling unless somebody has another question or anything, but call me, come by. If you have any questions or think of something, um, I've tried to cover all aspects of it, but it's one of these things that I think about all the time and I wonder if I've covered it all or not. So, um, you may think of something that's not struck me yet.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Quinn?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Sorry to be doom and gloom, but we'll see who's next. Oh, we're getting money in, so that's a good thing on the next item.
It can't always be good though. Next item is the DMV animal friendly license plates.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, you've, um, got it in your package. We're supposed to get three hundred and ninety dollars. You have a handout in front of you that Ms. Collins received today from Department of Motor Vehicles that is revised to four hundred and fifty dollars. I would, uh, make a motion that we accept the funds and, uh, work once again with, with Land Animal Welfare League for them to, uh, use these funds for spay and neutering.
Entertaining motion to accept the, uh, DMV animal friendly funds. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson.
Mr. Cook's motion will include to amend and appropriate into the budget so we can write a check to them. I would appreciate it.
Mr. Cook, Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Make a little money and then we'll move on to Lead Mines Rescue Squad Rock Boat, Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, we, we've solicited proposals for a rock boat for Lead Mines Rescue to use primarily, uh, there on the New River. Uh, we received two responses, uh, one directly from the manufacturer, uh, one from another company for the same boat at a higher price and a longer delivery window. So I recommend that we, um, uh, advance the, uh, proposal with the manufacturer. Uh, their, their net proposal lessens some tax that shouldn't have been included on that would be fifty thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Lead Mines has accumulated about fourteen thousand dollars in donations to, to put toward this project as well. So, uh, the county's net maximum contribution would be thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Uh, we ask that you authorize the county administrator or, uh, his designee to negotiate a, uh, final contract and agreement with the manufacturer for the purchase.
Entertaining motion to authorize Mr. Bayer his designee to proceed with negotiating the final price in specs with Red Red Jet boats not to exceed thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven. Understood, so we don't have to amend it. No, you're excited. Just give me a second.
I am excited about that.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. McRobbin.
Second.
Second.
We do not have this in our budget currently.
We will have to remake, uh, appropriation.
Okay. Nice. Well, add a man in preparation to it or come back with that.
We, we can do that once we bring the contract back.
Have a motion by Mr. McRobbin to second by Mr. Smith. Is there any question or discussion? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Perry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else on that, Mr. Hankins?
No, sir.
And thank you for your work on that. Anything else under new business, Mr. Bayer?
Do not have anything.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Move on to board reports. First, uh, board report is the budget committee.
Budget committee met on November third, two thousand and twenty-one and makes the following recommendations. Setting up, setting up new water department fund accounts for ARPA projects and transferring them in and appropriate the following amounts. Account forty-four zero one six dash four seven zero four three six, piny pump station piping, thirty thousand dollars. Account four four zero one six dash four seven zero four three seven, water reservoir repairs, two hundred and fifty thousand. Account four four zero one six dash four seven zero four three eight, portable generator, generator switch, uh, gear, a hundred thousand dollars. Four four, account four four zero one six dash four seven zero four three nine, SCADA system, a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Coming from committee doesn't need a second. Mr. Bayer, I know we've discussed this at length, but is there anything you want to add?
This is just setting up the, uh, the ARPA funds account in the water account so it can be tracked under the, uh, enterprise fund, not under the general fund.
Does anybody have any questions or discussion on that? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Transferring the Ivanhoe Volunteer Command vehicle to the sheriff's office for use with a special operations team and dive team.
Mr. Bayer, do you have anything to add on that?
Uh, in the package is the information about it. This was one of the vehicles that Ivanhoe was turning in. The sheriff's office, uh, has, uh, worked with them on it and are interested for their dive team. I expressed a little bit of concern about the magnitude and upkeep, but the sheriff's office feels like they can do that. It has a cascade air system in it that would be good for the dive team to use, uh, so no, no additional information.
Chief Deputy Klein, do you have anything to add on that? Does anybody have any questions or discussion? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Aye.
So approved.
Transferring a two thousand and fifteen Chevrolet Impala to Mount Rogers Cigarette Tax Board.
Mr. Bayer, do you have anything to add to that?
Cigarette Tax Board, uh, has, has hired a new employee. I think he may be starting in the middle of this month. Uh, this employee will be the enforcement person. It'll be going out throughout all of the counties, making certain the new cigarette tax, uh, stamps are on everything. Uh, this, uh, the sheriff's office provided this vehicle. It has recently made a, uh, long trip across the states in good running order and would be a good vehicle to provide for Mount Rogers PDC Tax Board.
Does anybody have any questions or discussion? It was a sheriff's office fleet vehicle. We appreciate Sheriff Foster's surplus, but I will abstain from the vote. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 I'll abstain. So approved.
Accepting Virginia Law Enforcement Block grant in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars contingent upon the sheriff's office agreeing to the terms and conditions of the grant.
Anything to add on that and Mr. Bayer?
Nothing.
Any questions or discussion? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Abstain. So approved. Anything else from the budget committee, Mr. Smith?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Water committee. Uh, the water committee met on November the fifth, two thousand and twenty-one and the water committee conducted interview, engineering interviews on October the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Sorry, I read the wrong date, didn't I?
I was thinking, that doesn't make sense. Okay, the water committee conducted inter, inter, engineering interviews on October the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one for the wastewater treatment plant expansion and wastewater conveyor system expansion project. The committee recommends entering into negotiations with Thrasher Group for the wastewater treatment plant expansion project and peat and boards for the wastewater conveyor system expansion.
It's that small print, Mr. Lloyd.
Well, it's, I mean, it ain't like I didn't read it before, but I still can't read it a second time.
Coming from committee doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Mr. Bayer, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Chairman, I will, uh, just mention, uh, Dan and Sarah, if I've got the names correct, are here from the Thrasher Group. Uh, they met out the, on the site, um, this morning, this afternoon. I don't remember what time it was. Uh, spent a few hours at the wastewater treatment plant, uh, reviewing everything and delighted to have them here tonight.
Well, I'm just glad to know who they are because I was thinking, I know them people from somewhere. Well, I'm just glad to know they work because I was thinking, I know them people from somewhere. That's old age also. I've got that. I can tell you that.
Do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
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 So approved. Congratulations. Anything else from the water committee, Mr. Horn?
I believe that was it.
Move on to board supervisors' time. Mr. Terry?
I don't have anything at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Horn?
Uh, yeah, actually I had a couple of things. Steven, you just brought up the cigarette tax. Someone had asked me why we were not imposing it. So can you give me an update on when we're starting and whatever?
Yeah, the ordinance that was adopted made it effective January first. So that's when it goes into place.
All right. Uh, the other thing was someone had brought up the comprehensive plan. I don't know what kind of meeting they went to. They said that basically the comprehensive, the people that are doing it were, didn't have anything about agriculture in.
Uh, I got that same complaint, Mr. Horn. Uh, I, I was not able to attend the planning commission meeting, which is where that presentation was made. It, it was the economist who's working as part of the, uh, the team with Hill Studios who, who had that analysis. And I'm passing on to them that, that they need to include agriculture as part of their review.
Okay. Uh, the other thing that I was asked about is, I was told that years ago, the school board in particular, uh, did not collect the gas taxes back that they pay. Does the county pay gas taxes or can we get ta- gas taxes back?
Uh, we are all on the Voyager card, um.
We, we, we pay a reduced rate, which reflects that we're, we're not taxable.
I figured it might've been that because I knew, I knew the school buses had the Voyager card and I wasn't sure. So I wanted to make sure before I told them that. Thank you. I believe that was all I had.
Mr. McCravitz?
Yes, I'd like to say, uh, uh, thank you to the board for the, the rock boat. I believe it's something that we all needed down there and out of here, especially since the river is in that district down there. So thank you.
I hope they don't ever have to use it, but unfortunately we know.
Yeah.
They will. I call you. Anything else, Mr. McCravitz?
No, I'd be, thank you.
Ms. Lawson?
Uh, just real quick, I wanted to echo what Mr. McCravitz said earlier and welcome, Mr. Burnett. Um, I look forward to working with you. Congratulations. I'm going to miss Mr. McCravitz, but I did want to congratulate you as well. And that's all I have.
Mr. Cook?
Well, piggybacking off of that, um, I'd like to see us invite him in the closed session with us so that he can get adjusted like we didn't have the opportunity.
I, I don't have a problem with that. They done it when I was here.
Say it's what they did when I came.
We were the oddball.
I think we were the oddball, yeah.
So that means you don't get to leave. Anything else, Mr. Cook?
No, sir.
And welcome back, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
A couple of things. Uh, first I want to echo what Mr. McCravitz said about the, uh, rock boat. Thank y'all for that. I know Lead Mines will appreciate that. Also, congratulations to Mr. Burnett back there. I look forward to working with you and we're going to miss Cory. Uh, so thank you for all your guidance and help with us. But, um, uh, with that, uh, Mr. Bayer?
You can still come to the meetings.
Uh, Mr. Bayer, any follow-ups from the complaint about Ivanhoe? On the maintenance upkeep for the property and things sitting in the right of way from our last meeting?
Um, no update, but I will do a follow-up with that on the scene.
And then the last thing I got, Mr. Chairman, um, getting a lot of people asking when we're going to have water, uh, down Topaz Lane, uh, for exit eighty-four to exit eighty-six. A lot of people on that side of the road didn't support. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Um, I just have a few things. Um, I, I know Sheriff Dunigan left, but, uh, Thursday's Veterans Day, I just wanted to recognize Mr. Cook and anybody else a veteran in the audience. I thought Mr. Ayers was, um, thank you for your service. Um, I know, Mayor Taylor, you're going to have to remind me, y'all's Veterans Day ceremony is?
It's on the eleven, 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 eleven.
Okay. Um, at the meeting center.
So it's Friday at eleven o'clock. I mean, it's Thursday.
Thursday at the meeting center at eleven o'clock. I know, um, we received, uh, invitation for, um,
Law Chamber.
Todd Porter.
Todd Porter.
Todd Porter, they're having a ceremony at ten thirty and then retreats. Veterans Day ceremony is actually on Sunday. But, uh, thank you all for your service. Um, Cory?
Aye.
I'm going to miss you, buddy. Besides myself.
Why don't you buy me a ham? I, I'll buy you a ham.
You know, I, I've, I've known Mr. McCravitz for a long time when he's on the school board for seventy-eight years, when he comes. Board. Um, I'm going to miss you, Cory.
I've been, let me take it, my, just.
Well, let me finish.
No, I mean.
It's my time.
You two ain't never agreed on anything. So why start now?
I know. I take that back, except the time he said I lied to you. But, uh, no, uh, Cory, you, you've been good to me and you helped me learn a lot. And you've been good to a lot of people, Miss Cannon, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Now, I don't want to say nothing.
What did I make you mad?
Oh, no.
We need to make sure that, uh,
I plan on.
Burnett picks up the reading of the, uh, yeah.
I did give you two years to memorize that whole thing and you ain't done.
Yeah. I plan on doing some traveling now that I'm thirty-nine. When you get out and travel up and down the road. But I walked on the railroad back when I was a young man. And I live in Ohio and my goal is to go real high again. And I may stay up there. I may come home. Who knows? I didn't stay the first time. And maybe the second time I might just move there. Close to Lake Erie, plenty of water, plenty of fishing. Motor homes ready to go. I'm ready to go.
Good for you.
Well, there's more to life than me, Miss Cory.
There's more to life than this year board of supervisors. I've been up here for twenty-eight years. That time moved on.
Oh, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to go in the closed session under two point two dash thirty-seven, eleven, eight-three acquisition or disposition of real property.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor, sixty-five, are saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. We're now on closed session.
The sheriff's case codes make the board at West End Road, Supermarket, and the closed meeting in this state, considering the term of the court boat. And in accordance with the reading of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and for a section two point two, thirty-seven twelve, of the code of Virginia, closed state by the West End Board of Supervisors, that such a meeting or combustion and performance in Virginia law. Now therefore, we resolve that the West End Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, on the public business matter, lawful, exempt from open meeting requirements. By Virginia law, we discuss in the closed meeting, to which this subject may apply. And he only says public business matter, as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the West End Board of Supervisors. And I make a motion with acceptance.
Have a motion by Mr. McCravitz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else, Mr. Bayer?
I do not know of anything else.
Mr. Farley, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Mr. Hankins?
One quick project update. Uh, we had a pre-construction meeting today with the contractor for the Lead Mines Rescue Squad expansion. Uh, they're going to start pouring, uh, footers and get ready for the slab the, uh, last week of this month. Um, delivery of the building is scheduled for sometime in December, give or take three weeks. Uh, so they expect that they'll have that, um, finished by April, uh, was the timeline we discussed today. So, uh, it should be minimally disruptive to the squad's operations.
Thank you, Mr. Bayer. Ms. Collins, do you have anything else? Does anybody have anything? We'll adjourn.